Yeah, I don't think it's the last of these.
Yeah, I don't know. One of the other questions that we asked. Yeah, I don't know enough about all that. I feel like I'm just getting my feet wet finally. I just took a tour. Oh, I think I saw, uh, who I saw. Did they have a whole board view? Several. I saw one. No, I don't stay here too.
You want to get started?
Yes.
I remember so, but I mean it.
We can wait another minute or two.
Okay.
I'd say let's give it till thirty-five after and see if she shows up. Hey, how you doing? Good to see you.
Did it look nice?
No.
Yeah. Not at all. Everybody I work with knows I'm a planning commissioner and they keep telling me. Everybody's at, everybody wants to know.
I wish we did.
All the time.
Access for the expiring food.
Oh, that's good. They probably have nice stuff.
They do. Or else it's their brand. But the prices look pretty good.
Yeah. That's good.
It's gonna be a zoo there Friday.
Oh, my gosh. No, I'm not going to. Although I'm tempted because I live, you know, I live in Otto Hills.
Yeah.
So I could, I was thinking every night coming over.
I wouldn't want to drive.
No, I'm not gonna drive.
They just can't.
On Mohawk, back on the. We're the newest house in the neighborhood, so it's that one that's up on the hill. I'm still. One of the guys that has lived there forever just described the area as like, there used to be a quarry or something. Oh, really? Yeah.
Can I go ahead?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we can. And I can turn it over to her.
Yeah, if she comes, you can just switch it back to her.
Yeah, that's the problem. All right, I guess for the sake of time, we've got a pretty full agenda. Our chair isn't here yet, um, but I'll go ahead and get started. Uh, I'm Jim Canning, I'm vice chair. Um, I'd like to call today the order of the meeting for the Chutter Township Meridian zoning board of appeals for June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. And we can quickly go around the dice here and do a recall. So member Bennett.
Here.
And number Trisace.
Here.
Number Brooks.
Here.
And I'm vice chair, member Canning. We're waiting for the chair. I'll act in her place until she gets here. Chair must still be here. With that, we can move on to the approval agenda. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at those? Have any questions or anything? I'm sorry, but the agenda, have any questions or anything with the agenda? If not, motion will be noted.
I move to approve the agenda.
Seconded.
Got a motion and second. Any questions to the motion? If not, go ahead and do a recall. Uh, member Trisace?
Yes.
Number Brooks?
Yes.
Member Bennett?
Yes.
And vice chair votes yes. We move on to the corrections, approval and ratifications of the minutes for May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Any questions or comments or changes to the minutes from the May fifteenth ZBA meeting? If not, entertain another motion.
Motion to approve the minutes from the ZBA meeting from May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Yes, sir.
You have a motion and a second. Go ahead and do the recall again. Member Trisace?
Yes.
Member Brooks?
Yes.
Member Bennett?
Yes.
And vice chair Canning votes yes. I don't believe we have any communications. Is that correct, Mr. Chapman?
Correct.
Okay. I don't believe we have any unfinished business as well. So we will move on to new business and start with ZBA case number twenty-four dash oh five, which addresses at twenty-seven thirty-one Grand River. It's Meridian Retail Management Two. I guess we go ahead and get started with, uh, Mr. Chapman. Take it away.
Okay, so the applicant's requesting, uh, variances to construct a drive-through restaurant at twenty-seven thirty-one Grand River Avenue. Uh, special use permit was granted at the February twelfth planning commission meeting. To construct a two thousand five hundred and sixty square foot drive-through restaurant, um, onsite, there's an existing, uh, bank building that's gonna be demolished. The one point one seven acre subject site is just owned C two commercial. So the parking lot landscape buffer along the west and the south property line is shown at six point six feet and twelve feet respectively. Uh, the ordinance requires fifteen feet. Um, this is measured from the back of the curb of the parking lot to the property line. And within this, uh, buffer, uh, it's supposed to have a vertical screen consisting of masonry wall, plant material, landscape, earth, burner combination, uh, no less than three feet in height. And also the parking lot landscape buffer along Grand River Avenue is shown at nine point three feet and the ordinance requires a twenty-foot parking lot landscape buffer, uh, in that area. And with the same restrictions as the, the other buffer. Um, and a four-foot landscape buffer is required to be located between, um, the west of the building and the parking lot. Um, inside of the, this buffer is required to be fifty percent of the landscape area. It must be planted grass, ground cover, shrubs, or other living vegetation. And, uh, the submitted plan shows zero foot landscape buffer between the building and the parking lot. Uh, section eighty-six, seven fifty-one, or seven fifty-eight, one A, requires that landscape allowance have a minimum width of ten feet. Uh, a section of the, uh, parking landscape island on the plan is shown at two point nine feet, uh, near the northwest of the corner of the proposed building. Um, so there's a table that summarizes the variance requests and the site plan's probably the easiest to see all this on. That's all I have.
Is the applicant or representative for the applicant to a property owner here would like to say something? Please step up if you can. Please introduce yourself and your name and your address for the record, please.
Absolutely. Um, good evening. My name is Mitchell Harvey. I'm a stonefield engineer, six oh seven Shelby Street, Detroit, Michigan. And you're representing the applicants. We're the several on this job. So as mentioned, we're, we're requesting a few variants, variances here for this fairly unique site. Um, you know, there, there's different, there's various variances that we're requesting, but they kind of all relate to kind of a unique property shape of the lot. Uh, if you could zoom out that image just a little bit. So what we're looking at when we were designing this is a few things. When we're working with planning commission as well as planning staff is how do we get enough stacking spaces and how do we make the site easy and able, able to circulate? And, um, so, you know, when you're looking at the dimension of the site, in the east-west dimension, you only have about a hundred and forty feet at the building line. Up there where it's angled along, uh, the roadway there, that's a hundred and fifty. So it's actually a fairly narrow site for the, for the overall size that it is. So one of the key features we wanted to, wanted to focus on was adding a, um, kind of a supplementary stacking lane over on the west side. Um, you know, I knew, we knew drive-through stacking was gonna be key here, so we wanted to add that additional lane to kind of hold any other stacking before clogging up the site. And another thing that we were really, uh, you know, keen on providing here is a bypass lane for the drive-through. Not only for customers within the drive-through to leave if they don't want to, um, you know, get their food. It's also for, uh, emergency vehicle circulation throughout the site. So those were two key factors that, um, you know, were really driving these, these variances primarily in the east-west direction. With that, I mean, the lot also, it kind of does have a unique flag shape where, um, if you see in the southeast corner, it actually goes and connects to the roadway to the east. So it's kind of a unique shaped lot, kind of configuring where we can locate, uh, green belt setbacks, that kind of thing. Um, but ultimately granting these variances, they feel in line with the commercial corridor. Um, they're all related to green space and I just want to note that we're adding approximately three thousand, a bit of square feet of additional green space compared to what's out there today. Um, we're gonna be providing all zoning ordinance required trees as well as an additional four trees on top of that. Um, and then over on the east side, uh, we're gonna be doing a bio-retention cell that we've been working with, um, Ingham County on, uh, finalizing that design. But overall, we feel that these, uh, the granting these variances will allow for a safe, um, and, uh, beautiful redevelopment of this currently vacant lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Does anybody else, uh, here in the audience have anything they'd like to say on the petition? If not, we can go ahead and get into the board time. Don't go too far in this case, uh, as I'm right here. If you do, we'll be able to call you back up. So going into our board time, does any, uh, board members have any questions or comments either for staff or for the applicant before we go into moving over to the actual criteria? Number Trisace, go ahead.
I toured the site a couple of times and at present, there is no buffer anywhere, if I'm correct. There's some stonework somewhere or four and a half feet in the south end or something, but that's about it. And then their retaining wall.
Yeah, so on the, on the west side, there's a retaining wall. And to the south, there's just a little gravel strip and it's two feet wide.
Right up to a building.
Yeah, right up to a building. Um, so I don't, you know, I don't think our, our lack of the green space back there will have any negative effect to that building.
And what are you proposing to put on the, the back, if anything?
On the rear of the site, we're not proposing anything. It's just that bypass lane that I talked about for, uh, full circulation around the site for.
So they can exit out on dawn.
Exactly. Kind of that flag piece is what's driving where we can put that drive on. That's why it has to be, you know, located in the rear there.
But no buffer on that end?
No buffer.
Okay. That's, those are my questions.
Thank you, member Trisace. Any other questions or comments for the applicant? They're both thinking.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
We're gonna go ahead. I have a question more so for staff. Are there any existing variances on this property site? Cause I guess since there's not any buffers existing right now, did they get variances for that previously?
Um, that's a very old building, so I'm assuming it probably predates our ordinance.
Okay. Makes sense.
I have the same question.
Number Brooks, go ahead.
Um, I'm. This being my first meeting with the ZBA, um, uh, hopefully this comment is well placed. So with the, the planning commission, what we talked about specifically regarding this property was why was the exit? Why was the, so much traffic going to be going on and off of Grand River? We didn't really think about what the zoning variances were that they were gonna request after the, that approval was given. And I just want to add a little bit of that context to say that one of the questions was, why not just have the primary entrance off, entrance off of Dawn Avenue? And I, I don't know enough here to know the difference, but I'm just curious what, what if the primary entrance was on and off Dawn Avenue? And what would that do to the zoning variance requests that we would have to consider during this session? Um, I don't know what they are, but it does make me wonder.
Can I, can I speak to that?
Please do.
So essentially, I first off, if we lost our Grand River curb cut, that'd probably be the end of our project here. But, um, just for discussion's sake, as we're talking through this variance, if you racked that, um, that curb cut on grand up there on the northwest corner. And you had all your access coming in through dawn, you're still faced with that same configuration where you have that bypass lane. So you're coming in through dawn. You can't get right into the drive-through lane, right? So if you scroll down a little bit, um, I wish I had a laser pointer. It's kind of hard to explain. But, um, so you come in, you gotta take a right to go up, wrap all the way around the site and get into the drive-through lane. So you'd still have these variances that we're requesting in that east-west dimension, even if you were coming in strictly off dawn. Um, so the curb cut on grand is not contributing to any of these requested variances these, this evening. And, um, I do remember you being on the planning commission. Since then, we have formalized an M dot approval for that curb cut.
All right, thank you. I also remember the laser pointer comment and maybe we.
If I point to that one, you guys can't see it, so.
I guess you, you can't win the ball, right?
We'll request staff bring one next time.
Yeah.
Any other questions, member Brooks?
Uh, not at this moment, thanks.
I have just a couple for you, Mr. Harvey. I'm sure you'll be able to answer pretty easily. The twelve-foot, uh, lane on the bottom there, up against the south, is that big enough? And will that entrance or egress and ingress be wide enough and turn radius enough for a fire truck to go through there?
Yep, we've mounted a fire, fire truck through there and no, no issue circulating.
And the million dollar question, I'm sure you've heard this before. I'm sure you have a good answer for it, but just to make it clear on the record. Is there a thought of, uh, taking that building and shoving that north? Obviously you have seven, you have eleven parking spaces up there. But was there any review of taking that building and shoving it more toward Grand River, putting more of that parking in the rear and maybe being able to move that emergency lane, whatever you want to call it, on the south, a little bit away from that wall to be able to put a buffer through there?
Yeah, we, we, we looked into it. Really what you lose is that, that front parking and then that full circulation around the front. Um, I believe there's also a setback for building up there that we'd be fighting and.
Uh, just a couple of things I wanted to add. The fire marshal looked at this, so he was okay with the lane size. And also the zero feet on the, uh, I think it's actually zero point or point five feet.
Five to the south.
To the south, yeah. That should be in the variance request as well, but it was not in my staff report.
So you have, you have a zero right now?
I didn't have anything. I think I totally missed that, but it should be fifteen feet. I only put the six point six, so I accidentally left that one out.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
And that's just to the south.
Yeah, just on the south.
I did kind of drive by and I went where the citizen, drive by it and kind of cheated and looked at Google Maps and Google Street View and looked at it. And I do very well remember Trisace's comments that there's, there's not much of a buffer there now, so anything that could be done, it sounds like, could you? You mentioned you were adding like four trees above and beyond, or you mentioned a square footage, like a thousand square foot of landscape above and beyond what's required or something like that. I apologize for kind of going backwards.
Yeah, so we're adding four trees beyond what is currently required under the zoning ordinance. So we're still meeting all the zoning required trees. And then compared to the site today, we're increasing the green space by, I think approximately three thousand square feet.
Okay, so that's a three thousand square.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so yeah, I, I firmly believe anything you're putting out there is probably better than what's there now, based on what I've seen. Any other questions before we go into board time? Nope. Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you.
We can go into the actual board time. Any other questions or comments, or we can go dive right into the actual criteria? Step right in.
All right.
Well, let's start with number one. So the first criteria is unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land or structure that are not applicable to other land or structures in the same zoning district. And these unique circumstances are not self-created. So, um, I know the chair typically likes to go into her explanation first and then get comments from her. But since she's not here, I can kind of, I'll pass it on to the other members first before we move on. So, um, with that criteria, number one, do any questions or comments regarding that one? Do you see that this would satisfy that or not? Number Bennett?
Well, um, I think definitely number one, just because that the L shape is really strange. And I mean, I don't see an exact dimension on this sheet, but I mean, if you take the landscape buffers from the north and south side of that L section, you have nothing, you know? So I mean, like, there's nothing you could do with that if you follow the buffer's activity, you know? So I can, I can definitely see that one personally.
Okay. Number Trisace?
I would agree with that and also that there is a, since this is a, a restaurant in a commercial building, there's certain parking minimums they have to comply with. And to put the buffers in, that would be extremely difficult.
Okay, thank you. I would have to agree. I would have to agree with both of these things. Anything, number Brooks?
Uh, just a question. Do we each comment on each of these?
If you want, if you want to comment on each one of them.
Okay, I don't have anything additional.
Okay.
All said.
All right. So it seems that we are in agreement that, uh, the unique circumstance, uh, criteria number one can be satisfied with this. So move on to, so review criteria number two, which is strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties that would prevent the owner from using the property for the permitted purpose. So any questions or comments on that one?
You know, as I was gonna say, is the, the comments we made with regard to number one applies to number two.
I was just about to say the same thing. It really would be impossible to meet the buffer variance and as well as parking space variance. I don't foresee any way that's possible, so.
It's only one drive-through lane, correct? Correct.
Yeah, one, one menu or pickup window and then on the outside, there's a bypass lane.
Okay.
So we want true.
So if this was a check for me, I'd really have some issues with.
Oh, yeah.
Two drive-through lanes trying to go through there. Okay. All right, I would see that as, um, the application satisfies review criteria number two as well. So we can move on to number three. Granting the variance is the minimum action necessary which would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety, and provide substantial justice. Questions or comments? Number Trisace?
I would say, um, given the status of the lot now and how it's configured, uh, putting in buffers as required would make the lot considerably smaller and probably not useful for a commercial development of any kind. Um, so I think it meets number three.
I would agree. I would agree as well. I know that looking at the design, it would be very hard to kind of minimize those buffers, like going from sixteen feet to nineteen feet or something like that. So in my eyes, the, the minimum variance is, is, uh, is accepted or, or what's the term? I'm trying to think. Help me tongue. Right there. Minimum action is there. Let's put it that way. Any other questions, comments on criteria number three? All right, we move on to number four, which is granting the variance would not adversely affect adjacent land or the essential character in the vicinity of the property.
Um, I mean, like you said, like where mine does nothing, so the fact that they're adding things basically, I think is improving. And it's, we're meeting the spirit of the ordinance as much as it possibly can without, you know, meeting the ordinance, but, um, so I would say that meets number four.
The other thing I'd add is the buildings surrounding it are blank walls. So you're screening from something that is there and not particularly attractive. So that's, that says we do need some screening where possible, and this does improve it considerably.
Moving along with what you said, um, when I looked on, I looked at the adjacent land uses, there were the all commercial, even to the south there, there, I think it's an I industrial zone district. So the intensity, the uses are probably more intense than what this use is gonna be. Um, so I don't think anything is gonna really, uh, be a negative impact or, uh, affect, how's it say, adversely affect any adjacent land uses. It's probably more intense than this is going to be. So I think we can satisfy number four on that as well. Okay, we move on to the last one. Uh, criteria number five, which is granting the variance would be generally consistent with the public interest and the purposes and intent of this chapter. Questions or comments?
I would just say, given the status of the property and its current condition, it does.
Okay.
I would agree. I think it's not going against public interest at all to, you know, go back against buffers that aren't even there to begin with, so.
I would agree. And as you heard from testimony from the applicant's representative, you know, they are kind of going above and beyond with the trees and the green space. So they're doing what they can to enhance that property from what it currently is. This is definitely in the public interest, I believe.
I would agree that they're going above and beyond except with the trees, but they are improving the situation from where it is now and where it might be with a different developer.
Well said.
Yeah, my only, my only comment in this whole, whole thing, I, I think I mostly agree with all the other things that we have said. is the, what the variances will do to, um, pub, like the interest of mobility on the sidewalks. I don't know if this has an impact on that, uh, but navigating that space, especially with the addition of Trader Joe's right there on the west, it's the only public interest aspect that I, I would think about. But I don't know if it's a deal breaker or not.
I do see what you're saying, because I mean, you're adding in a curb cut and more traffic over sidewalk areas, so.
Are you? I misinterpret, are you adding in a curb cut?
I think it's a different stuff.
Maintaining what's there.
Oh, okay. But you're probably going to get more foot traffic being a restaurant than a bank, per se.
Yeah, but you're not moving the sidewalk. It's a six or eight foot sidewalk. Uh, I don't think that's changing. It's right next to the road, so putting a buffer between the sidewalk and the building doesn't change much.
Well, I thought they added approval for a curb cut.
To maintain it.
Okay.
Existing curb cut, we're just bringing up to M dot challenges.
Oh. It's probably a requirement that they have to do.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
It's a good question. Any other comments on criteria number five? Okay. So do we grant through all of them? Um, any last questions or comments? You defer the applicant for staff before we can go to a vote or a motion? If not, is there someone like to make a motion on this?
I move that we approve the variance requested with the addition that, uh, Mr. Chapman mentioned with the rear setback, uh, buffer zone.
Okay, we have a second, on seconded. All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any questions to the motion? If not, Member Tressis, this is a vote for a yes to approve the variance. Member Tressis?
Yes.
Member Brooks?
Yes.
Member Bennett?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. Congratulations, you are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next case, which is EBA case number twenty-four dash zero six, addresses two-two-three-three Grand River, Tyler and Emily Dawson. Mr. Chapman, I will turn it over to you.
Yes, so the applicant's requesting a variance to construct a deck on an existing building at twenty-two thirty-three Grand River Avenue. According to Meridian Township Assessing Department records, the two thousand five hundred and forty-three square foot building was constructed in nineteen twenty-five. The subject site is, uh, point two-three acres and is zone C two commercial. The submitted site plan shows that the applicant is proposing to add a deck to the east side of the building. Uh, this deck is, uh, forty-two feet by six and a half inches by six feet. And the ordinance requires a side yard setback of fifteen feet. So the site plan shows that its closest point, the proposed deck will be four point nine feet from the side property line. So a ten point one foot variance is being requested. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. The applicant or representative for the applicant property owner here? Like to speak. Again, if you can, just please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Tyler Dawson. I'm at one-five-seven-eight-two Pastoral Path in East Lansing. So I'm, uh, representing the ownership. Emily, my wife and I operate the business, All Grand Events out of twenty-two thirty-three Grand River Avenue. Uh, we purchased the property about three years ago. This is the former Oak Miss Photography Studio. As you mentioned, the original structure was from about nineteen twenty-five. So we've been working at making some improvements and upgrades to facilitate us being able to operate our business out of the, the building, which by the way is, um, so we, we do floral and event design. So we're creating, uh, flower centerpieces and, and different things for weddings and, and special events in the community. Uh, so, uh, we're asking for this variance so that we can install, uh, it's, it's a deck, essentially an extension of an existing deck that is at the back of the property so that we can access from our design studio, which is in the, the back, allow us to access to, to our vehicle to be able to take our things to the events and then bring them back. Uh, there's a, there's currently a existing, uh, carport there on, on the east side that is, uh, it's, it essentially ends right on the property line, uh, with the, with our neighbor to the east. And so we have a, have a longstanding agreement, the, um, maintenance agreement that we inherited with the, the purchase of the property, um, with our, with our neighbors to be able to, uh, have the existing carport there. Uh, but we want to actually, uh, it's, it's a, an older structure and needs, needs, uh, it's not in the greatest shape. So we're, it's like, or we're planning on making a, actually a smaller footprint of a carport. So we're, we're bringing it back away from the, uh, from the Grand River, from the roadway, but keeping the same width. So it would still be right on that, that property line, but would be a smaller footprint than that is currently there. And then have the, the deck or a ramp to access from that new carport to our, our design studio in the back. So we're, we, we do already have, as I mentioned, an existing deck in the back of the building. So we're essentially extending that so we can reach the, the new carport. Um, this, we're in a little bit of a, a back and forth process with us in designing what would work to get access from our design area to, to, uh, the vehicle and get to different events and different configurations within the building. And after a few goes at it, go-arounds, uh, we've landed on the, the current, uh, request that we have, where we have, uh, access from the, the back studio along the side. And that, that's really going to help us be able to operate our business efficiently and how we want to and be able to come in and out of the building without having to go through the, the front part and downstairs and, and things that are much more challenging. So, uh, you know, the, it's the carport, again, making it smaller, but keeping that same width to the property line, but further away from the road. And then essentially extending a deck from the back of the building as a, as a ramp to access that, that carport. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. So any members from the public have any comments on the petition? No, okay, thank you. So we can go into questions or comments from the board members, either for staff or for the applicant, Member Tressis?
And just to get some clarification on your application, you have a deck on the back of your building on the east side, near the back, right now?
On the, the south side or the-
South end.
The south, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, how wide is that? Five to the most.
Um, that's probably-
In here, I'll pull it up.
Yeah, it's wider than what we're proposing.
So you're, you're basically looking for a ramp to take you to the carport?
Right.
The width of the sidewalk or something like that in there?
Six and a half, I think.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's, I can't find all the measurements on this. My eyes aren't big enough.
Sure.
And I have a question for Mr. Chapman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Given that this carport right now is well within whatever setbacks would apply, is this a non-conforming use that requires another variance to rebuild it?
No, he's not ex, they're making it smaller, so it's not expanding anything. But I'm trying to find the size of the existing.
It might be on the first plan view.
Is it equal to the width of the building, the existing deck?
So it looks small, it's smaller than, uh, the proposed.
It extends, so the, the deck on the south side extends from the east to west side of the building. It is, it, there's a kind of a half hexagon type shape that comes out from it. So it's probably eight to maybe twelve feet out from the building. And then there's a, a smaller deck on the east side that comes out, um, right from the, the door that, uh, was on the east wall there. And that, that portion of deck is less than six and a half feet. That portion's probably three or four feet wide. So the, the portion in the back of the building on the south side is the, the part that I was talking about, that was a lot bigger.
But that's not anything you're modifying.
Correct.
So, right.
Yeah, existing deck doesn't look, look very deep, looks maybe six, seven, six to eight feet deep.
Yeah, that's what I was looking on, on the design. I can't get-
Trying to eyeball it.
Yeah.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but on here, it's showing that the side yard to the building is only eleven feet, correct?
That's correct. It's very tight.
So it wouldn't even meet variance with just the building there, so.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, the original construction in nineteen twenty-five and then the, the part in the back is, I believe, from the sixties even. So the structure's been there a long time. The, the previous owner operated the photography studio for sixty years there.
Okay, I found something that says six feet for the deck.
There you go.
Forty-two point five-four feet long.
That's the new deck.
That's the new deck, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Or Mr. Chapman? You put him on the spot. Where's that laser pointer? Kidding.
I have one question for Mr. Chapman.
Member Brooks? Please do.
Uh, Mr. Chapman, the, so the, this application mentioned the, um, agreements between the other property owner. Is that taken into consideration when we're making decisions around stuff like this?
I mean, for them, as long as they have an agreement, that's kind of out of our hands.
Okay.
It's not something that we require.
That was the question I had about getting a variance for the width of the carport if he replaces it.
Yeah, but it's not expanding anything. It's making, it's actually getting smaller, so it's, yeah.
I actually did have a quick question for you. You obviously already have a pre-existing agreement with your neighbor for the carport. Have you talked to them about the ramp and the addition of the ramp? And just to make sure, cause, you know, not to say like you need it or anything, but just out of curiosity.
I have not, no.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you, Mr. Dawson.
Thank you.
We can go into our board time now. So any deliberations amongst yourselves, members, before we get into the actual criteria? Any other further questions or comments?
One thing I would say, I'm not the property owner, but I would get nervous on an agreement with the neighbor that says I can put my building on the lot line, but that's between you and your neighbors, so.
Yep.
There's a wall there, isn't there? Some sort of a retaining wall between those two buildings? Mr., sorry, I didn't mean to make you sit down to get right back up again. It's a, it's a, like a-
Yeah, there's a-
Toughy, but I think that's the last application.
A few foot high retaining wall that is on the, on the lot line too. So it's, uh, the, when the Midas, which is the neighbor next door, building was built, the agreement was essentially their building is, I believe, a foot or maybe slightly less from the lot line. And then this, um, kind of retaining wall and ramp to get on our property to get down to the backyard was the, uh, the trade-off. So for Midas to be able to build their facility, uh, using a bigger footprint than would have been, or at least would be allowed today, that was the, the, the trade, so that we could still access the back. So there's that retaining wall, that, that's why it's there.
So it's more of a benefit for them.
Yeah, I, I would, the, the benefit to, uh, to our property was not really anything, just the ramp allowed us to not have, or the, the former owners to not have, uh, something that was keeping them from being able to access the backyard. But even on the, on the west side of the property, there's an addition over there that's also very close to the lot line. So there, there's no access on the, on the west side of the building. So they needed to keep that access on the east side.
Mr. Chapman, could you scroll down a couple? I'll let you know when to stop. I saw something there. I didn't look at it the first time when I went through this. Keep going. Keep on going. It's the, the nor, it's like a, I think it says partial north view. Yeah, keep going. Keep going. Keep going, keep going, sorry. I don't know. I think it's the next page, yeah, scroll up just there. So if you look at that there, where it shows kind of the carport and then it shows the, uh, or the overhang and it shows the new boardwalk there, there's, looks like there's two beams. Is that, is that supposed to be like a rope or something hanging? What is that going to be? Cause it looks like there's steps walking up and that could be like the walkway, but what's the rest of that supposed to be? Or what's that representing?
Our vehicle back up to the, essentially was the end of the, the deck or the ramp. So that curved line is just a, a chain that we would remove and put back. And then, yeah, so there's stairs shown there on the right. And then, uh, the van would be backed up to the portion that's on the left.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anything else? Are we ready to move on to the criteria? Review the criteria? Sounds like it, all right. So again, we'll start with review criteria number one, which is unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land and structure that are not applicable to other land or structures in the same zoning district. And these unique circumstances are not self-created. So again, any questions or comments from the board members on review criteria number one? Member Bennett?
Actually, I'm right, losing my mouth. I can definitely see that one because, I mean, you know, like we, like I just said, the building is eleven feet from the property line. So the side yard itself can't even meet the variance with nothing built on it. So to put anything on it would be technically violating the variance. So I can definitely see that one, um, personally.
I would agree.
Anything else?
Building was built well before the requirements were set. And to try to impose them retroactively on that building would seem inappropriate. So I can see, uh, this being, and it's, he didn't build it. So it's nothing, he created, it's something he bought. So, uh, I think it meets number one very easily.
I agree. I definitely think there's unique circumstances there with that particular piece of land. That makes it a little hard to do what you want to do without requiring variance or you need a variance anyways, as Member Bennett said. So definitely think and satisfy number one. We can move on to number two. That strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties that would prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. Comments on criteria number two? Member Tressis?
Well, I mean, if you really want to be strict, it doesn't prevent them from using the property the way they're using it now and the way they intend to. But it certainly puts a limitation and a stricture on their ability to use it efficiently and appropriately. So I think it meets two. And the philosophy behind it, let's put it that way.
I can definitely see it provides ease of use for the property, so.
Okay, I can see that. Member Brooks, anything?
No.
Good.
She's pulling the, some of those phrases back up on-
Here.
Thanks. Keep going.
Okay. We'll come back to this one, but it sounds like, um, criteria number two could be satisfied as well.
Will be satisfied.
So number three, granting the variance is the minimum action necessary that would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, safety, uh, secure public safety, excuse me, and provide substantial justice. Comments on criteria number three?
I can see that being met. It is not a significant intrusion into the setback from what's there now. And it, uh, certainly is safer than trying to run your business, walking through the front where they do their displays, down the stairway, back into the, uh, the carport. So I, I can see that as a public safety as well as for the employees of the operation.
Okay. I agree. I'd agree as well. I'd like to add that, you know, typical walkway, I don't know what typical walkway, if you have minimum width requirements in the township for like a sidewalk?
Um, just ADA requirements.
Which is like two people with a buggy walking side by side after, what is it, 48 or I think it was recently updated about 10 years ago?
Usually four feet to, and some of them are six to eight feet.
Yeah, so this is, this is actually gonna be six feet in width. So it's not like the applicant's requesting 10 feet wide boardwalk, which would be really pushing it up beyond. So I, in my eyes, they're, they're kind of asking for the minimum action to be.
I agree.
So I think we can satisfy number three as well. Any other questions, comments on that? That will move on to number four. Number four is granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or the essential character in the vicinity of the property.
I can definitely see that because I mean, there's already an agreement to have buildings close to the lot lines and everything like that. So I don't think it's adversely affecting anything.
Last I looked, uh, the Muffler Shop did not have a big plate glass window on that wall to, to look over that space, so. I don't see an impact.
Yeah, I think it's a solid wall. I think you're right. Yeah, I would agree. I don't think there's, uh, as member Bennett said, being that there's already an agreement there to put that, uh, overhead structure, that's pretty darn near the, the actual lot line now. And this would even be removing, pushing back away from that lot line. I don't think there's much of an impact, let alone an adverse one, uh, to that property owner, which is Midas or, I wanna, heck, people wanna call him toughy. I don't know if it's the same brand or company, but Midas, the, the car, the hair shop there. I think number four, I believe, can be satisfied as well. For agreement with that? Move on to number five, which is granted the variance will be generally consistent with the public interest and the purposes and intent of this chapter. Comments?
No problem with that one. I, I think, um, as a commercial operation, this allows them to operate efficiently. Does not impact the public negatively. It won't even be visible to the public in general. Um, and it doesn't impact the neighboring properties. So I think it meets that.
Okay.
I agree.
I would agree as well.
Same.
All right. So I believe, uh, review criteria number five could be satisfied as well. So I believe all of them could be satisfied. So at this time, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Motion to approve ZBA case number 24-06 for 2233 ground area.
All right, motion is our second.
I'll second it.
All right, motion and a second. So then we will go to an actual roll call. Board member Trice.
Yes.
Sorry, this is a motion to approve the variance with ZBA. Member Trice.
Yes.
Member Brooks?
Yes.
Member Bennett?
Yes.
And vice chair votes yes. You are approved, sir. Thank you. So go ahead and move on to the next case, uh, three out of four, we're almost there. Uh, ZBA case number 24-07, which is VL Lake Lansing. VL, what's VL stand for, Mr. Chapman?
That's vacant lot.
Vacant lot, there you go, okay. For Consumers Energy One Energy Plaza. Take it away, Mr. Chapman, please.
Okay, so the applicant's requesting variances to construct a new natural gas regulator station, uh, on a vacant parcel, located, uh, the east side of Rutherford Avenue and the north side of Lake Lansing Road. Uh, special use permit is currently, uh, actually I believe at this point it's passed the, from the planning commission, uh, to allow the 16-foot by 12-foot station in a residential district. So the station is going to replace an outdated station that's currently located, uh, south of the property in the Lake Lansing Road right-of-way. The subject site is .19 acres in size and is zoned RV, single-family, high density. So the submitted site plan shows the proposed building that's 19 feet from the front property line on Rutherford, uh, that requires a setback of 25 feet. So a six-foot variance to construct the building is needed. And also, uh, section 86506A requires a maximum height of a fence in any residential district be a maximum of six feet in height. The applicant is requesting to install an eight-foot tall security fence requiring a two-foot variance. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Is the applicant or the representative for the applicant here like to say something? Come on up. And again, please just state, uh, both your names and your address for the record.
Amy Gelfen, Consumers Energy One Energy Plaza, Jackson, Michigan, 4921.
My name is Katie Lambert. I'm with Real Professional Services Company. Our address is, um, 540 South Sagino Street, Flint, Michigan. Okay, so the consumers will be constructing a new natural gas regulator station that takes the high-pressure transmission gas main down to low-pressure gas in order to distribute the gas to the residential community. And this facility serves over 4,000 customers in this area. And the new station will be on the north side of Lake Lansing Road. As was said, the existing station's on the south side of the road. It's actually an underground vault that's in the right-of-way. So consumers will be upgrading the facility and upgrading all of their aging infrastructure to provide a safer and more reliable facility on the north side of the road. And the new station will include new gas piping, above-ground gas equipment, fencing, driveway, and a 12-by-16-foot building. This building is only used to house gas equipment. It is not occupied and it's not served by any water or sanitary sewer. In order to construct this facility, consumers will be requesting a variance for the building setback. The parcel has dual frontage, so there is a 25-foot setback required off Rutherford Avenue. And then the opposite side rear setback is 30-foot wide. So the parcel is only 55-foot wide total. This basically renders the property unusable. And then they are also requesting a variance to construct the eight-foot-high security fencing around the per, perimeter of the facility. This is to prevent any unwanted entry into the site as this site is governed by TSA and Michigan Public Service Commission Guidelines for Safety and Security of a Natural Gas Facility. The fence, um, since this is a unique use of this property, the, um, site needs this variance or they will not be able to provide a secure facility in, in this area. So that's why I'm here. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Anybody here from the public want to speak to it? No? Okay. Thank you. Uh, any questions from the board members for the applicant's representative? For the applicant itself? Member Brooks, go ahead.
Does the, you said the MPSC, does that require an eight-foot-high fence?
It, it's, security guidelines suggest a seven-foot-high chain link fence with one foot of barbed wire. So this property, they're, they're putting in the seven-foot-high chain link with barbed wire on the west and south sides. But they spoke with the adjoining property owners and discussed putting in instead an eight-foot-high vinyl fence on that side. So the suggestion is the seven foot with one foot of barbed wire, but that will only be on half of the facility.
So I'm confused. Is the request related to the eight, the eight-foot or is it the type of fence?
It's eight-foot total, the whole side, so.
The variance is for the height.
Okay.
Yeah, the actual guidelines from the MPSC is the, um, seven-foot chain link with one foot of barbed wire. So it's eight-foot total height.
Okay.
The township doesn't have standards for what type of fence you put in?
Okay. Thank you.
Member Trice?
I have a question for Mr. Chapman. I'm looking at the GIS map as well as the map they've given. And I see this lot appears to be the result of a division of another lot. There's two lots on, one on Rutherford, one on Grand River, that look like they used to be a single lot divided. They don't have addresses, which is unusual for even a vacant lot. So this goes to the question of whether the variance is caused by action of either the owner or the prior owner that makes this an unbil, unbuildable lot. And I'm not sure that either of those lots now would be buildable, given the setback requirements.
Yeah, I don't know when they were split, but I do know that the property on the east here is actually owned by the, this house right here.
Yeah, I understand that.
So, but in terms of build, build, being buildable or not, I mean, it's hard to say in terms of what layout, you know, is proposed.
I think the lot width alone would prevent that from being built for the, the, the lot furthering on Lake Lansing. So they needed 150 feet or something.
For the front yard setback? It's 100 feet from the center line?
I'm thinking the, the frontage, the road frontage.
I think I can answer this. So the lot that consumers just recently purchased is a dual frontage. So the other parcel next to it will not have the dual frontage off of Rutherford, 25-foot. They will just have to comply with two side yard setbacks.
That's not the question I had. It's whether the lot itself is wide enough to build a house in the zoning.
Consumers is not.
Consumers is not? I understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna have a really small envelope. It's gonna be tiny. And plus we have, if you factor in construction standards in terms of like a 20-foot minimum for a house, uh, I don't think you're left with much of anything.
Well, and I, you did say at some point there's a frontage requirement for this zoning. And the frontage for that back lot, we'll call it that, uh, on Lake Lansing Road may make that unbuildable.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I don't know.
Didn't you say it needed 100 and?
It's just 100 feet from the center line of Lake Lansing.
Wide. I'm not talking depth.
Oh, the side yard setback.
No, I'm talking about the front, the road frontage required.
But the, that other parcel doesn't have a second road frontage.
Yeah, you're, but I'm not talking about the second road.
I got you.
Yeah, we're just kind of wondering.
You're talking about looking at the zoning law in general, whether that is a buildable lot.
Yeah, because we're wondering how could that lot be split like that in a zoning like this?
Yeah.
That seems kind of ridiculous that it was even like a thing to begin with. Totally unrelated to.
It's not, it's not your fault.
Lot size.
Yeah.
It may not have, cause if you look at a lot of the lots along that road to the north, they're pretty similar in size, even though there's a lot of single-family houses there. So it may not have been split. It may have just been platted like that a long time ago.
Except it's on your, it is an address.
Yeah, that's a good question, if it's even buildable.
Well, I can do, hold on. So minimum lot width is 65 feet in RV.
Okay.
Um, I can look and see.
I'm sure it's 65.
So it's already non-conforming, you're saying?
Yeah.
This is 55 feet as well?
So.
So it has to have 100-foot setback from the center line of Lake Lansing Road, correct?
Correct.
So it still has to have the 100-foot back, which if you look at the one map for this parcel for the subject application, you could see that 100-foot on there and just draw that over to the next parcel. The question is, what are the side setbacks that they'd need to have? They're not obviously 25 feet because there's not an additional frontage like the subject parcel.
It's seven foot side.
Seven foot?
Yeah.
So seven foot and seven foot, that's 14. It's 50, I'd say it's 55 feet. So you have about 40 feet that you could build in there. But you'd have to go back 100 feet from the center line and then have about 40 feet. I mean, right on the setbacks with about a 40, 41 foot.
And Mr. Chapman's minimum, he says it requires a side yard setback of 15 feet.
Did I?
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one.
I was gonna say.
I apologize. I'm, I went back too far.
Nope, you're good.
That's the trouble with the 130-page.
Yeah, I know, sorry. Yeah, so it was platted like that.
Okay.
Yeah, so, okay.
Okay.
It sounds like if there's, if there's seven-foot setback, I don't know what the rear setback would be, but.
30 feet.
30 feet. So if you have a seven-foot side setback, you'd have about 40 feet in between there and you'd have to fit it between the 100 and the 30.
Yeah, yeah.
So it looks like it could be buildable, but it, it'd be based on, you know, nowadays the type of house people want. They probably look at that and go, ah, no.
It's just something that jumped out at me when I was looking at the map and that, that stuck me as strange, but, okay.
That's a good question.
I wanted to put Mr. Chapman on the, on the spot to come over.
Just testing, yeah?
I think you did anyways, but that's all. Any other questions for the applicant before we let them loose and we can get into the board time discussion? If not, thank you ladies, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we can go ahead and go into the board discussion. Is there any deliberation amongst ourselves for the board? Or we can jump right into the review of criteria?
I have nothing to add to what we had discussed or the questions I had, but I would say that the need for this, uh, substation gas is clear in my mind. I have driven by there a couple of times and the buried shed on the other side of the road, gotta be a real challenge to maintain.
The only question I had, which I, again, I did it again, darn it, for the applicants, I should have had to stay up there, is that this thing is gonna be above ground, this building, this building. And I know, I know nothing about gas transmission. I know nothing about that. Does this, is, is there any noise associated with that? Even if it's inside of a building, is there any hissing or anything?
Nope, there will be no noise associated with this. It'll mostly be valves used for maintenance if they need to shut the gas on and off at this facility for any emergency reasons.
Okay, cause I don't know, I didn't do a site visit on this one, so I'm not sure. When you look at that property directly north of it, adjacent, I believe there's a single-family home there.
Yes.
And I don't know what type of screening they have, if they have a fence or not. This is gonna have a fence around it, but it's gonna be chain link, correct? So it's gonna be essentially a see-through?
No, this will have vinyl fence on.
This will be vinyl, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It's chain link on the road frontages for security reasons. They want to have a clear line of sight into the facility at all times. But the, um, facing the property owners, it'll be vinyl.
Okay, that was gonna be my question then. Okay, that makes sense. Cause that's what I was gonna ask is, have you talked to that owner? Got their opinion on, hey, you're gonna be not looking at something there when there's been vacant for how many years? You're gonna be looking at a building that was not there. Do you have any comments? Which I figured they probably wouldn't because it's not like this is, you know, an Airbnb or something being built there. This is just a building that maybe have one person come every couple of weeks, I think you had in your application. So, okay, well, thank you for that. Any other questions, comments? Not, we can move into the actual criteria for this one. So once again, I apologize, get to read these things for the record. But again, we'll start with review criteria number one. It's unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land or structure, that are not applicable to other land or structures in the same zoning district. And these unique circumstances are not self-created. So any comments on review criteria number one for this application? Member Bennett, your heart of thought?
I think the, uh, the unique case really comes from how it's zoned as single-family, high-density. And obviously that makes building a, uh, consumers building that very difficult. So I can see that.
Yeah. I should have asked this question off the bat. Is this type of utility a, a permitted use for this type of zone?
So they had a special use permit for, yeah, for non-residential use in a residential.
So that's, that was the one special use permit you referenced? That was going either before the planning board, the planning commission already?
Yeah, I believe it was passed at their.
Okay.
Last meeting.
Perfect, thanks for clarifying that. Thank you for the comment. Sorry, seemed like I was cutting you off.
I'm not.
Any other comments? I would agree with that based on the size of the property and the setbacks that are allowed there now. You basically can't really build anything without having to request a variance. Based on the size of the product.
If you can't build a 12-by-20 square-foot building without getting variances, that's a unique lot.
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree. Member Brooks, any comments? Are you good with that?
No, I think that makes sense.
Okay, so I do, we do agree that there is unique circumstances for this particular piece of land for this use. Uh, number two, strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties that would prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. Comments?
Now that they got the issue, uh, or the, uh, the variance, it couldn't be done if, without the variances that we're looking at, so. Special use for that and that. So clearly, uh, if, if we don't grant the variances, this doesn't get built.
I would agree. And I think you mentioned, you made the comment on the first application about, you know, this, this ties back to number one.
Yep, yep.
So that makes perfect sense, just based on the peculiary of the land and the, uh, you know, little enforcement of what the requirements are. I think it'd be very tough to do anything on there, let alone, you know, try to build what the applicant's trying to, um, put on there.
Definitely agree.
Okay. So I believe that number two can be satisfied based on, uh, information we have for the records. Moving on to number three. Granted the variance is the minimum action necessary which would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety and provide substantial justice.
I would say for that, that justifies the fence, which needs a, uh, a variance. And it also is supported by the need for the facility in the area to maintain the gas pressure.
which needs a, uh, a variance and it also, uh, is supported by the need for the facility in the area to maintain the gas pressure. And, uh, I think it carries out the spirit of the ordinance, ordinance with, uh, a special use permit granted.
Yeah, I think the fence makes, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Um, I think the, the height of the fence totally makes sense because it's complying with the MPSC, MPSC regulations, so that's necessary. But the, this didn't make me think if, uh, the, I'm probably gonna butcher the language here. But the six foot variance to construct the building, I wonder if a smaller building could be put in that would make the, that variance less is the only thing that I think about in this case is in terms of the minimum.
What are the actual dimensions for the building again?
Uh, 16.
16 by 12.
Yeah, 16 by 12.
I would say it's pretty darn minimized.
That's like a shed. No, I don't think it's very large. It's just, that's what, that's what it made me think about though in terms of the, the building.
That's a good question.
Well, I think they have to get into the building periodically to maintain, to check gauges, to make sure it's functioning and to get it much smaller than there. We don't know what the equipment is on the inside and how much space they need for that.
Right. Yeah.
This is relatively small, uh, building for the lot.
Yeah.
Just in a lot that requires a lot of setbacks.
Very strange lot.
Yep, I would agree with that. Okay, good. Alright, so I think we, uh, can agree that review criteria number three can be satisfied with this. So we can move on to criteria number four, which is granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or the essential character in the vicinity of the property. Comments?
I, I think it definitely does affect it somewhat. I mean, you know, you're, uh, proposing chain link fence with barbed wire on top in like a residential area, which is definitely affecting the character of a residential area. But obviously I do appreciate the fact that they were willing to change the, uh, the fence material on two of the sides to kind of better accommodate a rural area. They, you know, went up, I think above and beyond to ensure that it minimized the impact to the area.
Yeah, I would agree with you. This was the only one where I kinda had like a half question mark on it just because of being in a residential area. Before it was in kind of the road right away. But I do believe after what we've heard and you brought up the good question, that's why I asked the question about the fence, if that was gonna be over fence or not. And, uh, I, I do believe all those property owners around there received this application, correct? You have to notify.
Everyone within 300 feet.
Everyone within 300 feet. So if someone had a problem with it, I'm sure they would have showed up and griped about something with it and there's obviously nobody here, so I don't think there's any, any adverse effects, uh, being seen at the time. Uh, when it's constructed, maybe that's a different story, but for right now, it doesn't seem to be any, uh, very adverse effects. I do agree that there is a, is some impact because it is going into a residential area, but it's on the very outskirts. It's up against kind of a busier road and the applicant is doing what they can to kind of screen that from the, the nearby residential area.
Adverse being the, the key.
Correct, adverse being the key word. Yeah.
Well, the only other potential adverse is they're talking about removing four trees and these are full-sized trees. If you look at the two lots together, you drive back, they're both vacant. It's a beautiful building site if it was both lots. It's an ineffective building site if it's split. So, um, and I understand they have to take the trees down in order to, uh, do their construction, so, um, would encourage them to do some plantings to shield this if possible, without requiring it from the ZBA, which we can't.
I wondered about that, if we can make requirements. Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, you could make a condition on having some sort of planting screening in front of the, um, like the chain link portion.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Huh. Well, Brooks? Um, I, I don't know how this works, but the, one of the thoughts I had around the character of the building in relation to the residential area was to have, uh, some sort of native flower areas around it in the front to sort of improve the look of the property. I'm not sure if consumers comes around and mows their property along the edges there. But having some sort of like native garden right, right there would be potentially a nice improvement. I don't know if we make that sort of thing very often, but just I'm putting it out there.
Could I ask a question to the applicant, even though we're in our board time?
Yeah, I mean, if, if they're willing to, you know, work with you, that's.
That's my question is, is the.
I mean, they said they need to get in or be able to see for security reasons. I mean, and once you start planning, then they're losing that.
That's from the road, correct? That's from Lake Lansing and the, and the, and the main road?
Yeah.
The two, the two frontages, sorry.
Correct, yeah.
So they need to be able to see in there, but like the back on the side that's facing the house, they could potentially put some, some buffers, some sort of landscaping or something.
Correct, yeah.
And it's one of the first things I did when I looked at the property was look at the, they call it praiser. I'm still used to Florida where they call it a praiser. But, uh, I looked at the, uh, the parcel viewer website to see that other property and that's how I found out it was owned by the guy next to the side, cuz I thought, man, if they owned them both and, you know, if they combined them, they wouldn't need the variance per se. But, yeah, they don't own that, so they're kind of stuck. But would the applicant be, be amenable to some sort of, uh, I don't know what you wanna call it, member Brooks, some sort of vegetative buffer screening or landscaping around that? Would you see, you said around either the building or the fence?
Uh, some, something that was wherever it's visible from the street, that's not gonna get in the way of the work and the needs that you have as you're doing whatever's related to gas.
So, uh, consumer's typical site, and you can kind of see it on the site plan, has, um, two emergency mangates. In case of any emergency on site, they need to be able to evacuate the facility immediately. So we have left a five-foot zone around the outside of the fence free, so the employees can, um, evacuate as quickly as possible. So we prefer not to plant anything for safety reasons within five feet of the fence. It's actually 10 feet, but we can't meet that standard at this facility cuz the parcel's so small.
So I, I, yeah, I hear that, but then you also own the rest of the property though that's right along the road in the, in this whole piece of property.
There's a 10-foot easement, so they own, um, basically right along where the water main is would be. But there's that, um, emergency gate is located right at the corner there.
Well, isn't there a 10-foot easement on all property that people own?
A 10-foot water main easement?
Hmm.
They can't build on that. They can't put anything on it.
Well, yeah, but you like are responsible for mowing it and maintaining it and people plant on it and do all sorts of stuff. So I'm, I'm just saying like, yes, there's a 10-foot easement, but isn't that present on all property?
Yeah, I mean, we, they can probably contact the water authority and see what their conditions are with planting certain types of plants over there within the easement and over the water main. But as I said, the five-foot buffer around the fence is really the most important thing and it's actually 10 feet. So it would be 10 foot outside the fence line for emergency evacuation space.
And so you're saying that around the whole thing, you need to have that and it's going to be all gravel? Is that what it is?
No, it's grass outside the fence, it's gravel within the fence. So it just a 10-foot open space outside the fence.
Oh, and is that getting mowed on a regular basis?
Yes, that'll be mowed.
Oh, okay. So what I'm asking is, is it possible to? I'm just curious if it's possible to have some sort of native flowers or something like that that's in this space rather than just grass?
As long as it's not within the walking area because consumers, uh, they don't wanna trespass onto other people's properties. So the five foot gives walking area if you come out the gate to walk over to the driveway.
Okay.
So they maintain an access within five feet for walking.
Okay.
Is it a requirement that that fence be pulled out almost to the border of that property instead of closer toward the actual building?
Yeah, they have different design guidelines for every above-ground structure, uh, structure on this facility with, um, safety, um, areas for operating all of the equipment. So they have minimum standards between every piece of equipment on site that, how far it is away from other things.
Interesting, okay. It's back to your, sorry, back to your original question.
Yeah, no, I, I'm good. I'm, I'm not gonna pursue this any further.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments on, review criteria number four? I believe we can agree that, uh, criteria number four is satisfied based on what the applicant is, is, is doing in lieu of the, uh, the properties next to it. Okay. We'll move on to the last criteria, which is granting the variance will be generally consistent with the public interest and the purposes and intent of this chapter. Member Bennett?
I, uh, I think most utility work is about as much public interest as you can get in a variance request, so I, I can see that. I think it's definitely something that's very necessary. Updating old infrastructure is pretty much statewide and probably nationwide problem, so I can definitely see that.
That's a good comment.
I agree.
I would agree. I think we all can agree to that. Any other comments? I believe we can say that criteria number five is satisfied as well. All right. So with that, uh, with the review of the criteria, we, we believe that criteria number one through five can be satisfied. So is there a motion for this? I haven't been saying these, I should be saying these, for ZBA case number 27, 2407. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve ZBA case number 2407 for the vacant lot on Lake Lansing Road.
Motion, is there a second?
A support.
All right, we have a motion and support. Any questions or comments on the motion? If not, we will go to the roll call, which this is to approve ZBA case number 2407. I finally remembered after three cases in. So, member Trice?
Yes.
Member Brooks?
Yes.
Member Bennett?
Yes.
And vice chair votes yes. So congratulations, you are approved. Thank you for coming. Good luck. All right, so let's get to the final one here. ZBA case number 24 dash 08, uh, 2600 and 2630 Bennett, which is 242 Church at 2600 Bennett Road in Oaklins. Mr. Chapman, take it away.
Yeah, so the applicant's requesting, uh, variances to construct a pedestrian bridge that connects their two properties at 2600 and 2630 Bennett Road. Uh, the proposed bridge will be 40 feet long and six feet wide. Uh, both of the properties are zoned R A, single-family medium density. So a parking lot landscaping buffer is required in, uh, between the both property lines. It's 15 feet, uh, as shown is zero feet. Also, the ordinance requires a side yard setback of 10 feet, where no structures are allowed in that side yard setback. The side yard setback is shown at, um, zero feet, so a 10-foot side yard setback requirement is also requested. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Representatives or applicant or representatives for the applicant like to come up and say anything? Once again, just please state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jamie Wetzel, uh, 2370 Seminole Drive in Oaklins. Um, also the pastor of and therefore representing, uh, 242 Community Church, properties at 2600 and 2630 Bennett Road. Uh, we are partnering with an Eagle Scout candidate for a, uh, pedestrian bridge project on our properties to connect the two properties and I'll have.
Yeah, my name is Kennedy Jincotti and I am working on my Eagle Scout project, which would be to build this bridge.
What's your address, Kennedy?
5910 McMoon Way, Lansing, Michigan.
All right, thank you.
So, yeah, the, um, the, the project would be, uh, a bridge connecting, uh, the two properties over a drainage ditch. Um, we currently, uh, obviously have programming in, uh, a lot of use of both properties that currently provide, uh, requires either, uh, going all the way out to the front of the property sidewalk, walking and then back to the, the next building's entrance. Uh, we do currently mow, uh, a path through that ditch that we, uh, informally, uh, use to, to cross that. Uh, that could be a hardship for, uh, for some people who maybe aren't as mobile or if it's, um, you know, whatever conditions. And so, uh, this would just allow us to, uh, connect those two properties, especially the, the field, which is, uh, I haven't looked into this, it's about a half, maybe half an acre on the 2630, uh, property that we use for, you know, various activities, kids' activities, picnics, things like that. Um, it would allow a little bit more direct access to that, that area. Um, so this would be obviously a utilitarian kind of purpose, but then also, uh, just in general, we do have, uh, in that area of the township, we do have, uh, you know, deer, wildlife, those kinds of things and birds. And so, uh, I imagine it would also be a, uh, a good fit with the natural, um, feel of that, uh, neighborhood. I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Board members, any questions or comments for the applicant? Member Trice?
Yes, um, did I read that you're, you're not the owners of this property you're writing?
Uh, correct. Correct. We do have, um, uh, agency to make all decisions, property-based decisions, as far as the buildings in, in the property. Uh, the way that it's set up is we, uh, lease from a, what is essentially a religious, uh, financial institution. Um, they, they are the owners and we lease it back from them.
Okay, and you've received their permission?
We have.
Okay. Do you have a record of that, Mr. Chapman?
Um, well, if he has, they have agency, then, yeah.
You have it?
You have proof of the agency.
Yeah.
We, we submit.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, it just, it's a, it's an unusual situation for, uh, a lessor to be asking for a zoning variance and that kind of struck me as a little bit odd. This is a, a different type of zoning variance than we see. I don't, I've been here for a year and a half and I haven't seen a bridge yet. I've seen a deck.
Plenty of decks, yeah.
And a pathway through a nature area, but, um, so, and I think that was on the planning commission. Okay. I can understand why you wanna do this. It really strikes me as strange to need a variance to do something that is eight feet wide, uh, over a drainage ditch, but I, I understand you gotta apply the rules to whatever's being requested.
Our ordinance is so strict on the definition of structure, so it's like you can't really get around that. Anything that's attached to the ground is basically considered a structure, so.
Is there a height limit for what's considered a structure? 36 inches, 42 inches?
I don't think it's like, no, I, I don't believe so, no.
So you don't consider like patio structures, do you?
No, there's actually is an exception for patios, so.
But that is the only reason why they're asking for the variance.
I understand.
Because it's a structure and it's going across this property line, it's basically zero on both properties, yeah.
But it is unusual.
It is unusual, yeah. Thank you for those comments. Any other comments from board members? I had a couple, but I will, I will wait and see if member Bennett or member Brooks say any comments. You're good?
I think the one thing that is, that strikes me as difficult here is the, the lasting nature of this. So if the one property is sold or both are sold to different people, then what happens in this instance? But I, that doesn't mean that I don't think that it makes sense what you're requesting or anything like that. This is what I'm sort of thinking about in this scenario.
So variance would only be tied to the one property, correct?
Um, so it's, it's on both. I mean.
So the variance is on both, I mean, they own both, but they're separate, separate parcels, so the variance would only be tied to the one parcel, correct? Or is it actually, well, no, cuz the structure goes on both parcels.
Yeah, that was, that was my understanding. So that's why I was like, this is.
So technically, yeah, if they would have, you know, God forbid one day sell and somebody wants to have their rezell for a residential, they could build that building right up to the lot line on both sides, cuz it'd have a zero setback.
Yeah.
I mean.
Not that that's what's gonna happen, but.
There is the opportunity to say, you know, in the event that property is sold, there, they could remove the, the bridge, basically.
How often does the township see that though? How often does the township see that, though?
Yeah, that's going to be the problem. How do you enforce that?
Right.
Yeah, that's a good question. That's a good point. A good clarification of the actual variances for both parcels, because that structure is spread on those parcels.
Yeah. Then when in twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-five, when people are looking at this, they're like, why is this thing here?
My question I had for you was, is there any you can bring up an aerial, Mr. Chapman? I'm sorry, I know this is good, but if there is like an aerial of it? Yeah, there you go. So how far, so this is going to be an actual structure, so how far onto that twenty-six thirty property is this going to go? Like, do you know, like a length of footage, you know, fifty feet, hundred feet, is it going to connect all the way to that sidewalk that's right there on the north side of the parking lot next to that building?
As far as extending east and west?
Correct.
It will not. How long is it?
Forty.
Forty feet, yeah. It will not, I don't know if you can see that corner, that's our dumpster enclosure. I don't even think it extends, and then the edge of the parking lot, I don't even think it goes to the edge of the parking lot, if I understand it correctly.
Okay, because I thought it did. I thought it crossed the property line.
No, he's saying that on twenty-six hundred.
As far as heading, heading east.
Oh, okay, how far does it extend on twenty-six thirty? I'm sorry.
Yeah. There is, you can see the, just to the right of the property line is a line of pine trees, I believe, the darker trees.
There's a gap in between there.
Yeah, I think it just goes, I'm not a contractor, but just a few-
Your best guess.
Few feet to the left of that tree line.
Yeah, this, so the aerial's on an angle, so it's not accurate with the property line.
Gotcha.
I'll say this, the trees are on the far side of the ditch. The ditch is on, is to the east of the trees, and in between the parking lot and those pine trees.
So the ditch is all on the twenty-six hundred?
Correct, correct.
How often does that ditch fill up with water? Like after every rain event, or is it just periodically? Pretty dry?
I have not seen water in it for a number of years, and then it's designed so that obviously it fills up closer to Bennett, where the storm drains are. So I've never seen it anywhere near that far north in the ditch.
So the whole premise, okay, so the whole premise of the, is you have people traveling from twenty-six hundred, from the church over to the actual center, or whatever you want to call it.
Correct.
And this is a way to kind of get them from having to walk all the way down to the sidewalk at Bennett and go around the trees.
Correct.
What type of like activities would somebody be coming from one building and going to the next? Are these activities to where people are going to be dressed up, wearing like church clothes on Sundays, things like that?
Heels and- No, no.
And you said exactly what I'm getting at. If women are wearing high heels and that, I would just be a little worried that because this thing stops in the grass.
Sure.
We're going to have people now walking on that grass, and grass sometimes is wet, and is that going to be kind of a hazard for people to walk? It'd be different if you connected it all the way down to that sidewalk, which I know is probably tripling the length of the thing and the cost and everything else, but-
Sure. I can only speak to the culture of our current congregation, but there aren't many formal, formal dressing issues in that regard. Generally, when we have, you know, when there are large amounts of people trying to get from one to the other, it's often because we're doing something in that green space. So it would be, you know, kids' activities, you know, picnic, cookout, those kinds of things.
So you have a lot of people that cut through there and use that anyways, that grass area that you mowed for them to all to go through there now?
Not, yes. A decent amount. We would obviously have more if there was a bridge, and it was intended for that purpose.
How was it received from the tenants there, your practitioners at your congregation? How was it perceived to have that kind of gap and allow to walk through there? Are people in support of it, or do they complain about it at all? They say, no, I'm still walking down to the, all the way down to the sidewalk?
They, most people in general avoid it because of the slope of the ditch at this time.
Gotcha. So if there was something there, they'd be more amenable to-
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Ken?
Member Truceice?
Yes. As Mr. Chapman was saying, the drawings, the lot lines here are not necessarily accurate to the foot. I am wondering, is it possible to build the bridge and have it land short of the twenty-six thirty lot line? That would only require a variance on one of the properties and takes over the question as to whether, what happens if one of them gets sold? Your congregation no longer needs the twenty-six thirty building, and so the owner decides to utilize it for a different religious organization or whatever. I'm wondering if there's enough room there to fit it in on one property, since the ditch is all on one property. And I don't know the answer to that, I'm just thinking that that might avoid some future problems if things develop differently. And then the question I had is, do you need to consult with the drain commissioner if this is a dedicated drain?
We have. They have, in email and writing, they have replied to us saying that they consider this a private drainage ditch, and so we, they have no interest in the matter.
Lucky you. Yeah, I was going to say, lucky you.
Despite the fact that they required us to put it in.
Yeah, okay. All right. Your first question is interesting, though, Member Truceice, is that, do you understand what he was asking, if there was any way to, that boardwalk could be shortened to kind of stop at the property line if it has enough room to get through that ditch to make it flat?
I do.
Kind of end at the property line before it goes on to twenty-six thirty?
I do. I do not know the answer to that question.
And that's a design issue that would have to go through the planning commission, not the planning commission, but the property development group to determine whether it works.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
Not going to the property line, they're going to-
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, and it's worth, I think, the effort to find out what is possible. It doesn't change whether you'll need a variance, because you'll still be close enough to the property line to be within the setback requirements, but it may result in fewer potential legal problems down the road. So it's worth investigating, even if it doesn't work, it's worth investigating, in my mind, anyway.
Member Brooks?
Yeah, is it possible for us to grant a variance on one of the properties this evening, like on the twenty-six hundred specifically in relation to that? Rather than have them have it, because if we delay it, then they have to go through this process and then come back, but then if they end up finding out that this is just on this property, then?
My guess is no, that we would have to, because they're requesting the variance for both parcels, we would have to at a minimum probably table it and allow them to bring that issue back and change their application, their variance request, or deny it, and then they have to wait, I think, another year to-
Yeah, if it's denied, you gotta wait a year.
But I believe that, because that's what they're asking, is a variance for both properties, so we can't kind of split this up on our own, we'd have to table it and allow the applicant to make that change with the township. Is that correct? Correct assumption?
I mean, yeah, I mean, you could always put a condition saying they need to record an easement, shared use easement.
That's the other way to deal with it, with a formal easement between the two properties, even if it's the same owner.
Right.
Establish a-
How big would that easement need to be?
Well, just meet the dimensions of the-
Dimensions of the length of the board on both sides. Interesting.
That makes some sense, too.
Yeah, I don't know about that one. I'm not sure how that would work per se, but. Any other questions or comments? That's a good, good point. I got all our heads running around, Member Brooks.
I guess my, just to wrap it up, I guess my, my point here is that I, I mean, we haven't gone through all the five criteria, I think this is reasonable request here, and that if we can make it happen this evening, then I'm interested in however we could do that, so that we don't have to see it again, would be my, my own take on the issue.
The alternative would be not taking action tonight, just leaving it as unfinished business and having some further investigation in what can and can't be done, and bringing back at the meeting in July.
That's what I was saying, is that we could table it, allow the applicant to work with the township and see if that's even an option to move that back.
Yeah.
But that would require it, obviously, coming back at a later meeting, which, as Member, Member Brooks said, you know, it's probably more amenable to try to make a decision on it tonight, if we can.
It's strange to use the criteria we have, where we're dealing with two properties. Anyway.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm willing to go either way, but it's just, there's a lot of questions in my mind.
I know that this probably doesn't sway, not sway, but just in my mind, I think one, one strength is that the rarity of specifically religious property changing ownership, as opposed to residential properties, it doesn't happen nearly as often. And I get that in twenty-one hundred, twenty-four and fifty, you still have to deal with these kinds of issues, but, yeah.
Well, I know one-
It happens.
Religious property in the township that's been up for sale for three years.
Exactly.
The planning commission, three or four times, too, because of-
They're very unique properties.
Yeah, they are unique properties. The twenty-six thirty building is a unique property, but not just from a religious standpoint. The way it's structured, it's, it could do a lot of different things.
Correct.
Where the church building probably is a little bit more designed for the purpose it's being used for now. But I understand what you're saying, and I would like to figure out a way to approve this in such a way that doesn't cause problems down the road. So, but that's, that's why I'm raising the question.
Understood. Yeah. Appreciate that. Sorry, microphone's probably picking up every page flip I do. So based on that discussion, do we want, as a board, to go through the review criteria? Or do we want to make the motion to potentially table this, to get some more information so that we can make the proper decision on it? I guess that'd be the question. Because if we go through the review criteria and we find one of them can't be unanimously justified, then there is no table, and it's-
Right. And I would prefer to table it until the next meeting. Personally, I'd make a motion to that effect.
I would probably agree. I think limiting it to one property if possible would be a lot better than granting it for both, and just helping it with something in the future.
Do I have, could I ask one, a question real quick?
Please do.
Question? Is there, is there any place for, if the owner, if the both parcels are owned by the same owner for shifting the property line, so that the bridge is only on one property?
Yeah, that's a, that's a total separate process that you'd have to work with the township on to do that, yeah.
Probably time-consuming.
Not for- Yeah, time-consuming, it costs you some money.
Because that requires the survey and some other things, meets and bounds and all that, so it probably isn't. And I think ultimately, we can get to a point where a decision can be made, whatever we find out, but I'm not sure what that decision is best at this point. That's just my feelings on it.
I agree. So did I hear you make a motion to that effect?
I made a motion to table this.
Till the next meeting, and are we having a meeting in July? Mr. Chapman, do you know?
Oh, we are.
We are?
Yeah, well.
Do we have one already?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And we have, and we have a second for Mr. Bennett?
A second, yes.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Do you have any questions to motion?
Do we, are we setting any criteria that we're looking for at the next meeting related to this?
You could probably state that for the record if you want.
Do you understand what we're asking for, what you're trying to get you to?
I do. Our hope was that this would be resolved this evening, only because as a minor who will be returning to school in the fall, we were hoping to start construction a little earlier, so this would delay, obviously, a month at least.
It may not, because you would have to do a design, a formal design, and get it to the building code and all through that, which would require time in our office, which may help you answer the questions if you sat down with the people there. Because this is a structure that still has to get approval, building permits and all that stuff.
Yeah, they've been working.
Believe that's-
Yeah, that's done.
That's done?
Yeah, that's done. Plans are in here.
I saw some rough drawings.
Yeah, that's the plans.
We met with John Hines at the Britney Township.
Yep.
He helped us with those.
Okay. These are the drawn ones, rather than the typical planning.
Yeah, I think that goes back to my question, why I was, I was curious what the specific criteria we're trying to get, or questions answered, so that then we know, it's unclear to me what-
I guess the question I have is whether this could be constructed as designed and only require a variance on one of the properties.
So solely constructed on the property with the twenty-six hundred address and not going across the property line of twenty-six thirty to require a variance on that property as well?
Right.
Okay, yeah.
And if it can't, are we saying that there, an easement is a potential way to solve for this going across both parcels?
I think we can approve the variance, and if they feel the need to get an easement to memorialize that, they can do that. It really isn't, I don't think we can order to get an easement if both, if the property owner of both sides wants this done, they really don't need an easement until one property the other is sold.
I guess the question is, would we feel comfortable approving the variance tonight for both properties, or no? Because if we did, that would save a lot of hassle for them.
Sure. Yeah.
If, if we can meet the criteria, yes. We can go forward with that.
I mean, from my point of view, I, well, I read through this before we come to the meeting, here in the applicant. My only concern was just the safety of the people. I thought, you know, it's going to be on grass, it's not connected to the sidewalk of the twenty-six thirty property, I didn't know if people are going to be wearing sandals or shoes or high heels, if, you know, people are going to try to trudge across that grass, is it going to be a slip and fall problem, where we're, you know, township or you are going to get a lot of complaints that people are trying to fall, or trying to cross there and they're wiping out. But it sounds like, you know, you made clear ahead on the record that that might not be the case, and most of the people in your congregation are pretty laid back, they're, you know, they're wearing gym shoes, things like that, they're not wearing, you know, non-slip high heels. Sounds like this thing might be a little, it's amenable to people are wanting to use it, they're just, they don't want to cross down that ditch now without potentially something there, so this may be an improvement to the public safety between those two properties, instead of having them walk all the way down to the property. So other than just the safety factor of, you know, are these people going to slip and fall in the grass? And is it going to be, you know, lawsuits of, you know, this, we're going to find out they're getting sued because something we approved because they didn't extend it and it's going- getting sued because something we approved because they didn't stand it and it's gonna stop on the grass? That was my big concern. Other than that, I, I personally don't have an issue with the actual variance itself, being that the owner's, it's the same owner, it's crossing one particular area of the property, it's farther back from the road. I understand why there's a need for the zero variance because it's crossing the property line. My big hangup was just the public safety portion of it, which was like, I think, criteria number five, the last criteria. That was my biggest question mark. I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Truance, about if these things, you know, and it's just a hypothesize at this point, if you decide, the owners decide, we're kicking you out, we wanna sell these things, we wanna build that residential housing behind there out and sell it, which they'll probably end up splitting them even more because these are pretty massive properties. You know, now they'll be able to build essentially up to the property line with zero setback on that, on both of those sides and potentially create some issues that we would be allowing by right with the property. So that was the question that Member Truance is, is there a way just to kind of minimize that so that only one property can build to the law, to the parcel line instead of the other one? But other than the safety, which I think I got my answers, I don't have personally an issue with, with any of it. But obviously, if there's concerns for it, I'm not, you know, gonna trump you, Member Truance, and say that my, you know, my issues are greater than yours or vice versa. If you feel, and there is, actually is a motion on the table, so we still do have to take action on that. But if they're, you know, if that, if the board feels that's the way we wanna go.
Well, you know, I, I look at it both ways. We can't solve all the problems here.
Right.
But I'm just trying not to create extra problems.
Yeah.
And I think if we're going to look at approving a zero setback variance, it should be limited to this construction only, if we can do that.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna get to. So this variance is for just this deck. I mean, if somebody proposed to, you know, split this and build houses, that would be a totally separate issue for them to come to us. So this is only this...
A variance for this construction.
This construction, yeah.
So basically, the width of this deck up against the property line, the variance would be for that. Anything, anything outside of that deck, you know, farther down, it's still gonna be zero setback, correct?
No, it's not.
So it's just gonna be in the vicinity of that deck is the zero setback.
Yes, so that four, six feet width?
That's what I'm saying, just to say, so...
Just the six feet.
So that makes it probably a little bit easier to understand.
That makes me a lot more...
Because that's, that was gonna be my, and I'm glad you brought that up, I appreciate it and thanks for clarifying, Mr. Chapman, because I was, I was looking at the map and I'm thinking, these are pretty massive parcels. If that's a zero setback along that whole parcel line, I mean, you could have a lot of buildings with a lot of structures but right up to that thing for 200, 300 feet on both sides. So that makes sense if it's just a six feet.
But once that deck is gone, then the variance is gone as well, so it's, yeah.
Okay. We can go forward and I'll, I'll withdraw my motion.
Do we need a second to withdraw the motion, the original motion? Does that need to be seconded, Dino?
Sure.
I'm not a Robert's...
We can do it. It sounds official, yeah. Let's do it.
Okay, so we have a motion to withdraw the original motion and a second on that, so we're, we're back to the beginning. So you wanna go forward then with the review criteria?
We can do that.
It's been a long evening already. So starting with number one, last, last time we get to read these things, I promise, you guys had to read through these things four times now. Number one says, "Unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land or structure and are not applicable to other land or structures in the same zoning district, and these unique circumstances are not self-created." So any comments on that? We've probably beat that one to death, but... Member Truance?
Yes. No, I think it is unique because of the uses of these buildings and they're owned by the same owner. Asking for a waiver to build, or a variance to build a bridge across your own land because they are set up as separate parcels seems like a reasonable action and it's not, I mean, these were platted well before these buildings were established as a religious co-use type of situation, so I think that's... Nothing about the property itself does that, other than having a drainage ditch in the middle of it, but I think it is, it's unique in that it's owned by a single person and is to build a bridge across that drainage ditch for ease of access.
That's what I was gonna mention was, you know, for me, the peculiar thing was, you know, this is in a residential zone and I'm gonna guess that a lot of the properties in this zone don't have a five to 10-foot wide ditch running down one of the side of them like this does. So that kind of presents a big challenge right there to, if that ditch wasn't there and it was flat, I'm sure you probably wouldn't need this boardwalk, people just walk through there like everyday thing. But because that ditch is there, it's pretty, pretty unique to this property and it's, it's a pretty long ditch going all the way back, probably from that wetland area just north of there, all the way down to Bennett Road. So that would be my justification for this kind of being a peculiar aspect of that, of that parcel. Any other comments?
The amount of foot traffic as well is just gonna be completely peculiar to the, the surrounding area, so I can definitely see that.
I would agree to that as well. I think we agree that criteria number one can be satisfied, so we'll move on to number two. Strict interpretation and enforcement of the little terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties that would prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose.
I think definitely the drainage ditch is the, the challenge, I think, for the, using the property as a permitted purpose there. So I think enforcing this and not allowing a ditch to be put over, well, it's not really, you know, forcing people to use, go down and use the sidewalk, so it's, it'll just be further constricting flow through the property.
That's what makes this confusing, because it, it's two properties.
Right.
And so a strict interpretation doesn't keep either property from doing what they're doing, it keeps them from doing something together, which makes it a strange beast to deal with in the single variance, but I, I could go along with that, though.
Yeah, I definitely can agree with that, that, like, once again, that, that ditch is, is more of a burden than it is anything. I should have asked the question, and I know it's due right now, but I should have asked the question of, is this thing gonna be used in the wintertime? Is it gonna be snow removed on that thing? Because I'm thinking without this, you know, obviously, people aren't going across that ditch in the winter. I highly doubt that. So in the, in the winter, it's gonna force everybody to do what they don't wanna do, which is go all the way down, walk on the sidewalk of Kamau or drive over there, and that could be a pain, or this could be a...
Well, as he said, usually the crossover is to utilize the green space and there isn't a lot in the winter.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Any other comments on criteria number two? I do believe we can satisfy that one as well. Number three, granted a variance is a minimal action necessary, which would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety and provide substantial justice. I think the safety aspect is probably something that we've hammered on a lot, with just ensuring that people can cross that ditch safely. If you go back and forth between those two properties, we don't have to walk another 500 feet out of the way.
I've never known what provide substantial justice is, but in this situation, there's a certain amount of justice and all, a property owner to, through the agency that he is assigned to, to utilize the property as it's being used, so...
That's a good question, provide substantial justice. I, I take that to mean...
Required by statute.
Yeah, I, I, I take that to mean that all users could, could use this facility, meaning people in the wheelchair could wheel across the, the boardwalk if necessary, granted they'd be ending in grass, but they already know that.
Okay, interpretation. It's, I never thought about that, Bill.
Yeah.
It's very interesting.
I'm not 100% sure if even that's what it means, but that's just the way I'm, I would take it by reading it with the word justice. I'm thinking like, not so much environmental, but more like equity.
I think it's an equity between property owners, that substantial justice is you can't deny this person from using his property because that person doesn't want him to or something like that. But it, it really is not defined in the statute that makes this a required criteria.
And they wouldn't even have that issue because it's both properties owned by the same owner, so...
Right, yep.
Any other comments? Otherwise, I think we, I, we can meet the review criteria number three. So we'll move on to number four, granted the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or the essential character in the vicinity of the property.
Definitely not.
I think it'll enhance it.
No way.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see how this would adversely impact adjacent land either. If anything, I think it would enhance it and provide, definitely, I'm trying to jump it ahead of number five already, but I think it would definitely increase the public safety from allowing people to just be able to cross right there and not have to go down toward the road or walking way out of the way in the adverse weather and things like that since we are still in Michigan and, you know, all winters can be. But I don't see this as adversely affecting the adjacent land myself. I think we can agree to that one as well. Last but not least, granted the variance will be generally consistent in public interest and the purposes and intent of this chapter.
I think you're on the side of, it definitely benefits public interest. The amount of people that, you know, probably go to this church and, you know, for the more to 2630, I think it's definitely fitting public interest.
I would agree. Okay, I think we have unanimously agreed that all five review criteria can be satisfied, so I will take a motion at this time for this case number, ZBIA case number 2408.
Motion to approve ZBIA case number 2408 for 2600 and 2630 Bennett Road.
All support. All right, we have a motion and support. Any comments or questions on the motion? If not, we will move to a vote to approve the variance. Member Truance?
Yes.
Member Brook?
Yes.
Member Bennett?
Yes.
And vice chair votes yes, so you are approved. Thank you for sticking around and providing us the additional information that really helped out.
Thanks for the patience.
Yeah. Waiting through three other cases. So we can move on here to our B and I don't think there's any other business or any other public remarks since you're the last four left. No? Okay. Board member comments?
This was fun. Actually, we got into something new tonight that, that generated a lot of conversation back then, so thank you for bringing this to us. It's, it's been a challenge.
Thank you guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My, my only comment is more of a question. So Member Brooks, are you full-time now on, on the ZBIA?
Yeah, recently appointed on, not Monday, no. I don't think it happened Monday. No, it happened two weeks, two weeks ago, so, yeah, I replaced, uh...
James.
Yeah, trustee McCurtis.
Yeah, because I think he came to one meeting, the last meeting, and that was it, because he took, he took, what was the gentleman's name, or he took your position, because you moved up to be a trustee?
Yeah.
That's right, that's right. Well, I wanna say welcome and thank you for coming and you had some great questions and comments tonight, so we certainly appreciate it.
I, I do have one question during this part. So is, is the, is the, when groups are requesting variances, so it, Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Can't read your name from this far away, I think it's Chapman, but...
Yeah.
So does the variance stay the entire time in perpetuity or is it only in effect on that, so like, for this, for this bridge, basically? So if the property is sold, does the variance go away or is it if the bridge goes away, the variance goes away?
If the bridge goes away, the variance goes away.
So the variances are attached to the objects?
That you granted the variance to.
That we are discussing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Follow-up question for the setback ones for the new drive-through restaurant? Those just follow the property, though, right? Or when do they go away?
Yeah, so that's gonna be a little different because it's not with the structure.
Okay.
Yeah, that will stick with the property.
That'll stick with the property.
That's what I thought.
Goes away and becomes a bank again, they still have those setbacks there.
Okay.
That were granted.
Which they haven't met, anyway.
Right, right.
Yeah, because I actually didn't know that about structures and that it followed the structure, so, yeah.
Structures are interesting.
Very interesting. In that case, we're allowing them to build in that area and if they cease building, it's gone.
It goes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that made me a lot more comfortable with granting that for both properties, so, because that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, I didn't realize that, that the variance would be tied to that, basically with the width of that boardwalk up against that property. I thought it was for the whole eastern, western property line. I was thinking, oh my gosh, they have to prove. All right, none more. If you have any more comments, I will do it in the favor of, Jermon Sur, who's not here.
Thank you.
Oh.